It's, it, no, it's just discussion on the town's real estate property that we have a possible sale of it. We want to include that. It's, uh...
You know what I wish? Okay. I owe five acres right in front of my house and there's five acre, or thirteen acres?
Yes.
Is that right? Behind that property in front, uh, excuse me, north of that property. It's got Bounder Road on the east. It's got, um, Kiss property, I believe, on the north. And it's Town property on the east. Moretown property, another section four, which is our water, uh, it's a spring. It's our water plant.
Is there a map? JP, do you have a town map with like the plots and stuff where we could bust out? Can we count them out?
Well, there's actually seventeen acres, but we would never cut into around Look Springs. That would have to be protected.
Okay. So it's seventeen total, but thirteen usable acres? Okay.
What's the appraisal value? Um, the tax appraisal value of it is sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five hundred?
Thousand.
Sixty-five pounds.
Has it been logged?
Um, I think the portion of that, a couple of years ago, Ryan would know more. That was logged two years ago. Three years ago.
Probably three years now.
Three, yeah. One beat had his done. His had done. Oh, yeah, so nineteen, yeah.
So it's one parcel, seventeen. Are you going to go boundary line adjustment or?
Well, that's where, it's two parcels. And that's where we would have to have it, what if, what was, uh, Jesse gonna do? We're gonna shoot a line on it and see.
We're property adjustment. A line adjustment.
So when you guys are thinking of selling that, would you sell it outright or put it in an option or how would you?
Well, that's...
That was quite a whole lot to be talking about.
Yeah, okay. We would definitely go probably with the realtor to help us on that because there's a lot of paperwork that at this time we can't assume or pay for without that property being sold.
So you have an appraisal value?
Not yet. We just want the discussion of it. It's a possibility because of this situation.
So why are we selling?
We're broke.
We have no money.
Yeah, we don't have any money and we need operating funds.
There's no revenue.
Well, we have revenue.
The revenue coming in, the next two quarterlies from Seattle City Light won't be till August and November, so if you guys sell it...
There's still money coming in, but with all the fallout and the recent issues, like did we owe money to a lot of people? We owe money to a shop truck. We owe money to the sheriff's department. Like the bills just haven't been getting paid for months, so we're way in the red and we need, it's on my air. I'm sorry, it's, this is your, your property, you know, it's, it's not a great place to be, but we're fortunate to be grabbing this piece that, you know, we could separate and get us back in the black, you know, get us in that running.
So that's what they're going to use from these values. Well, there's an old logging room there. Thank you, Ryan.
So there is access to that property?
Yes.
There's access?
It's an old, yes. You're welcome to...
You've got a name, you will.
There are...
Go ahead. So it would be this section. And we have had it like right in here.
May I have a question?
So this is...
When you say access, tell me how this is access. Is it, uh, Old Bounty Road? Is it going across somebody else's property?
Really, no one else's property.
Well, it depends. There is access. It would have to be on Boundary Road and there's a section there between the house that's above me. It's above me.
So how can you, all of a sudden, you decide to sell this when you have no answers of access?
We're having public comments.
Why we're having to take a vote out of it?
We want ideas.
Opinions, yes.
It's really just...
We're floundering right now. We are barely doing our last plea.
I'm asking questions because we've got a public sitting here that wants to know, how, how do you plan on selling this? It's not a real true access. You say there's access, but it's surrounded by everybody else.
There is.
There is access.
There's real estate on the board. That's why we're having a public hearing. We are here to take your comment, not answer questions. Thank you.
Can I have a comment?
Yes, you can.
The most valuable real estate that the town owns is that field. And if you want to liquidate to get out of the red, that's what you need to liquidate. That's all we'll say.
Thank you for your comment, Sean. Do you have any questions or?
Ryan? Just so you know, so that access that comes off Boundary Road, well, it goes up, but then it goes onto your property. So that road that is there would have to cross yours and then it goes up onto the city. Technically, it's there.
I mean, about the only thing you can use that property for is groceries. And that, and then cut them down eventually. It's really, it's straight up on, thankfully, on all four sides of that property, it's straight up like a pyramid.
Yeah.
Or straight down depending upon where you're looking. But it's really awesome view at the top.
We're just looking at our options and we, anyone comments? Suggestions?
Has there been any consideration? I mentioned in Pittsburgh the other day, there is a small parcel by the cemetery that's owned by the city that would be buildable. I mean, maybe an acre. It's not in the cemetery. It's where that little shed is that they keep the flowers in on that old there. They're building site.
I thought that was part of the problem.
That's Tom Crocker. Goes over and joins Steve Crocker to the west and Willie, Willis Brown to the south.
There's a road behind. I bet up there. It used to be a road when I was getting too excited.
Yeah.
That's something.
I know you're not going to answer questions, but I'm just going to throw this out. Is there, is there a number you guys are trying to achieve? And if so, in terms of, to make you guys cash positive or is there a number you're trying to achieve that you have to liquidate to achieve that amount?
No, that's going to take, we don't, we don't have a goal. This is just something we're looking into.
So, you know, I, I, I would advise for what it's worth, I would establish that number first.
Yeah.
And then do, do a valuation, have, have Pollyanna or somebody provide you with a valuation and then see what you own versus what you need.
And go from that, really all we have right now.
I do have a number. I, Jay and I are the ad hoc committee, so we kind of know where we're at. And we do have a number. Um, and that's where the realtors will come in and do that appraisal and obviously hopefully be above with the tax value.
If, if we decide to do that.
Right. Yes, we have other, we have one other option that just came in before we set up this meeting. So there is one more option.
Are you looking?
It's, it's another town's health possible.
It has to go through council first.
It has to go through their council, then here, and so that's time consuming also.
We're not making, this isn't to make any decisions. This is to take your comment. We won't make any decisions unless it's in a public meeting.
My comment would be that you might as well sell it, but it's not much value.
Right.
So if you think this is going to be your savior, don't, don't get your hopes up.
Well, no, we're not, but it...
But it's really got no use to you guys ever.
But then my thought too is keeping it, to keep it around the springs.
Yeah, you would have to keep that.
Yeah.
It's actually parceled off. It's two separate parcels.
We're passing the map.
There's the parcel with the water. Yes, there's the parcel with the water and then the actual piece that we're...
And you're protected with state rules.
Yeah.
No one can do anything on that area.
You can add rules to a sale too. As a seller's.
Such as?
If there was something you needed to protect.
Oh, okay. You can set the boundaries back.
It's similar to covenant's code of restrictions.
Okay. Okay. If this did go forward, we would seek a realtor because we need that.
And that would be you drop out as an attorney just to cover your bases.
Okay.
But it's an option.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? Any other ideas?
I think Jay said it. And then we'll have fifteen minutes for eight minutes. Just to keep the time. Comment. It is hot in here. No, because he can't hear with the camera. He can't hear. Everyone else?
So for clarity though, the two, the two considered routes right now, a liquidation or some type of assistance from another town.
Which includes a, includes sitting down with the contract. They'd have to contract out with their, and then we have to show that we can pay that contract.
Right, and so the, the next thing I would look at is, is what ways might the town generate revenue or increase its tax? Having an increase in, in commercial activity here in town. There's not much going on, but there is, there's space again. That is your most valuable real estate. How you use it with some creativity, you could probably create a situation where you were generating revenue. I would, I would encourage you guys to look at that too.
You're talking about Eagle Field right here?
Yeah, yeah. You know, and like, I'm tacked. I'm not doing anything in Medellin, so nobody worry. I'm not here to develop Medellin. But, you know, most hotels need about six acres for a franchise hotel. If you look down at the Tribe, the way the cows fell, uh, there's center down there, that's kind of the same size as this field and you can see why they need that around a, a building like that. So you have three hundred and sixty degree access all the way around.
Yeah.
But, you know, like, I've got a bunch of contractors coming up with no place to stay in New York and so there's use there and it's not going to be me, so I'm not trying to push that.
No, and we're open to any suggestions and costs.
So finding somebody who would be willing to even engage in a long-term lease, but, you know, if you sold that outright and were generating hotel tax revenue, I mean, that's a boom, it puts a lot of people to work.
Right.
It's needed. I mean, there was the white paper provided to the, uh, to Newport, what was it, seven, eight years ago about the number of beds that were shy, was several hundred?
Sixty beds of shy.
Right, so it's not, it's not a pipe dream. It's the meat port and that's the only space up here. That's it. There is nowhere else in North County, nowhere that you can build except right there. I can't even, even if I wanted to put it on the, little forest side.
We don't have that.
No, we do, but it's a super fund. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
We can do all kinds of industrial stuff, but I'm not putting people in there. Root around, die. So, anyway, I would encourage that kind of thinking because that, that, you have an asset there, not just to sell, like, so you could figure out how to generate revenue out of there. And that, that would be a boon for this community for decades. So I'll get off my sofa.
I appreciate it, thank you, Sean. Looking at the best light.
Water in between?
What was that you said when we showed up, riding with the lawyer, your lawyer?
Like, covenant codes and restrictions?
I forget.
I gotta get money for this.
You could give it more, or you could take it down. So Jay, the tax value on that with the, it's the parcels together or are those separate?
It has its own P I D, it would have a separate tax value.
One is forty-six and one is sixty-five.
One's forty-six and one's sixty-five.
So the one that we're looking at is sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight. That's the assessed value. That's the margin. No, we talked about missing the car.
It's only five acres on. How many acres is it, Jay?
Uh, it's thirteen point one-four. So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
We can talk about it in the meeting tonight, but we don't have to make a decision. We just have to make sure to talk about it in the public meeting.
So Sean, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I know that you see the value in that property, but what other ideas are there besides the hotel? Only because I'm really fond of that when I do drive into this town and the community aspect of it is what I'm really clinging to.
I understand. You know, I've got twenty-one and a half million gallons of water on a water right that I've just acquired and there's people that are interested in doing bottling water. That would be even less probably attractive. You know, and this is the thing, I understand, when, when I talk to the franchise, the franchise is out there. Like Holiday Inn matches the local, right? So you don't have to have some garish neon craziness. It can be really low-key and it can be tucked back. It doesn't have to be the center thing. And when I talk to them, they, uh, they would do a mix of long-term and traditional stay. So they've got little kitchenettes in there, so anybody who has to stay for a few months in a contract could stay. And then I told them, you know, we didn't want to have anything to compete with the local restaurants.
Right.
Right? So both, um, both restaurants, American Pie and the Western and, and Mike for that would have a boom. But I understand your point, you know what I mean? It is nice, but, you know, from there it just gets more commercial, right?
Right.
Not less, right? And so, but, this economy right now is such that there's a lot of advantages to get started in whatever development you're going to do. You know, because I've got a lot of stuff going on in Medellin Falls and like I said, we don't have anywhere for people to stay, right? We don't have anywhere for people to stay, so.
Regardless of that, this is a very touristy area. I mentioned a whole lot of places other than camping for people to go. Right.
Like Bigfoot Festival, you guys would have killed it.
Well, also, a, a hotel like that would bring in a community gathering spot too. And that is definitely needed in this area. There are no gathering spots.
There's a lot of places to go for retreats. Plus it'd be a destination for that. Wintertime, they have people across country skiing, snowmobilers, Canadians that can't make it back across the border with, uh, the, the rooms for the night. I don't know how many times I've had to tell Canadians, there's no real rooms up here. You're going to have to either go to Idaho or drive over to the other border crossing.
So, you know, in my, when I evaluated that for space, because I did do an evaluation when I was the chamber president. So in, in my scheme of maneuver was to tuck that hotel back in the eastern aspect of that and then have a community development or a community center rather, much like the Canvas Center. Because our older population here, they have to go down to Cusick to get in the pool and do all the stuff. So we could have a building like that and then we could have, you know, a restaurant or, you know what I mean? Something that's not the bar life and not the burger life that doesn't compete. Because if we have seventy or eighty rooms in here and you have even twenty people staying, like, those restaurants get smashed, right? So then you've got the, the, the really big problem of needing more services, right?
Correct.
And, and so, you know, those are retail out, every one of those is, is putting money into the coppers here to, their retail tax, yeah, any kind of job. So I really, I, I firmly see how beautiful that is, but that to me is the most likely course. And all, all that would take for you guys is to surplus the property mandate that's used for that purpose, for the, whoever buys it. And then these franchises, that's how they're done. They're, they're very cost effective.
My fear with the franchise though, at what point does it run out?
Uh, in terms...
That's my fear.
In terms of?
Um, will they fold on us? Is there a guarantee they will never fold on it?
Well, so, and this is...
I mean, because our economy is not rolling.
Versus a private market.
No, it actually, it's, it's interesting because, you know, I'm interacting with a lot of different international businesses, Ukrainian, Egyptian, UK, you know, all over the world. It is, you know, our perception and what our media might be telling us is not accurate. There is, there is a desire after COVID to disperse manufacturing, to disperse the supply chain, to make power generation at the local level. All of these things are coming, right? And we're just up here twiddling our thumbs, but there's a significant, there's a significant opportunity to, to come at this now, right? So the town can actually play a part, right? If you know that you have that asset here, then you're, you're banging away at, hey, come have your, your big celebration here. Come have another festival up here. Hey, set up this big thing here, right? Because now you actually have something to say, right? You can stay in this hotel. So as much as the business owner, and when I say franchise, it's a franchise owner, like, there is a person, right? So it's not just this huge corporation. There's somebody at the helm there that does not want to lose, right? And that person will be every bit as interested in not failing as you are, probably more so.
I would hope so, because that's my fear.
Yeah, so, and the way these things are set up, like, you can do everything from franchise and then I'm a manager operating the store to I franchise and I never set foot in the place. I just hire a manager and everything else, right? So the, the one you want is the guy who's going to run it, right?
Wants to be...
Right, you know, as was indicated, you can start to, to lay out how you would like things to go in the purchase sale agreement. You know what I mean? You can say, these are the things that must happen. If you buy this property, you cannot sit on it and just, and you cannot resell it. You must develop it and you must...
But then again, we're at the public's comments and disclosures on that too, because I know a lot of people love just how that works. And I know that and I respect that.
If there was a pool, I think people would get on board.
A pool would be awesome because we wouldn't have to go to the...
An asana.
An asana.
You know, this is, that's exactly right. So it's not an oligarchy, right?
Right.
So you, you toss it to the town. It would get shot down.
Right.
It's shot down, right? But if the town is like, yeah, under these conditions, you know, we're interested at least in entertaining the, the idea, well, then the town is closed. And, and that's not a final say, right? That's just an opening, you know, and I, I would recommend that every step of the way, hey, we have this offer. This is what they're offering. This is what they intend. What's the town thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
I would do anything ever again without yays and nays, right? On record. So, that would be my recommendation, because it's just going to get less attractive from there. You, you don't want industry here. This is not that. We've got industry over there. Like, you can do, you can do some great recreational activity stuff here by having that, that hotel.
I know a lot of people don't want to see our tiny towns develop too much because we like our tiny towns, but we also have to stay afloat and little things like that to bring in revenue. And especially like you said, you know, if we had touristy towns, it would bring in some revenue.
And how many locals, like, you have a family reunion and you've got five, ten granddavies, you know what I mean? Three, four in-law and then their families. Next thing you know, you've got twenty, twenty-five people in your four bedroom house if you're lucky. And you're putting the kids out in tents and, I think locals would appreciate that too if you have that access.
Well, if there's a pool, you know, that could be used, there's a lot of like people around here that could use like the physical therapy part of that, you know?
Sun classes for kids.
I learned how to swim at Benny's in Caulfield.
Thank you, Sean, for your comments.
Can I ask a bit, a question? Um, you know, we've got like that really nice park and it's got a lot of space in the back there. Would that be something that we could maybe plant something that's out of sight? We could develop the park a little bit more?
Like garden?
For like, well, for like a hotel site.
Because our sewer system's a flood. And it floods.
The whole thing floods.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, never mind.
Wouldn't be beautiful, but never did that.
Yes.
All my kids swimming in there when it floods.
We love kayaks.
Oh, yeah.
Just not many of us in this room remember, but that piece of property used to provide a pretty good...
And then their families, next thing you know, you've got twenty, twenty-five people in, in your four bedroom house if you're lucky. And you're putting the kids out in the tents and I think locals would appreciate that too, to have that access.
Well, if you're the pool, you know, that could be used. There's a lot of like people around here that could use like the physical therapy part of that, you know?
Some classes for kids.
I learned how to swim at Benny's in Caulfield.
One more minute. Thank you, Sean, for your comments.
Can I ask you that, that question? Um, you know, we've got like that really nice park and it's got a lot of space in the back there. Would that be something that we could maybe plant something that's out of sight? We could develop the park a little bit more?
Like garden?
For like, well, for like a hotel site.
Cause our sewer system's in front there.
And the clothes.
The whole place was.
Oh, that's right, yeah, never mind.
Wouldn't be beautiful, but never did that.
Yes.
All my kids swimming in there with a club.
We love kayaks, oh, yeah.
Just, not many of us in this room remember, but that piece of property used to provide a pretty good income for the town. When it was all houses and it was owned by the town. My mother was a clerk in those days and it was, as Rick remembers, it was full. There was a lot of housing there. And, and as we all know, we're short of housing in this area. So that, you know.
It was a lot of work back then too. It's, uh, quarterly seven. We're going to end the, uh, public hearing. There's no reason why you can't keep talking, but the official public hearing is.
We're gonna take a break.